Okay, seeing the presence of a quorum, I'm calling to order this meeting of the Regional School Committee at 6:02 PM on Monday, June 14. And it will begin with roll call attendance. When I call your name, please stay present. Mr. Demling.
Demling, present.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington, present.
Ms. Kenny.
Kenny, present.
Ms. Lord.
Lord, present.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, present.
Ms. Stanser.
Stanser, present.
And McDonald, present. So we are in order, and our first item on our agenda is to vote. Ms. Spitzer?
I think you might have, might not be able to see Mr. Sullivan.
Oh, yes, I can't, sorry. I always forget, I have to just.
I see you.
Dr. Morris, maybe it would be helpful if somebody could explain to me how I make a default to always be automatic, but it's not auto. It says it's automatic with a maximum of nine, and I have to do it every single time. Sorry. Mr. Sullivan?
Present.
Okay, we are in order. Before we go actually to item, our next item, which is to vote to enter into executive session, I wanted to check in with Dr. Morris if he wanted to share a quick update before we move on.
I do, I would like to just briefly share an email that was sent to all Amherst Regional Middle School families about two hours ago. And I'm just going to literally read the email. I'm not going to offer more updates, but it is a significant event in our community, and I did want to communicate both with the school committee as well as the larger community about it. This email was written with the permission of the family, so I am going to name a student name, but that's being done with the permission of the family of the child. Dear ARMS or ARMS families, I am writing to share that one of our ARMS students, eighth grader Nate Squires, has been involved in an incident that occurred outside of school and is in critical condition at a local hospital. We are in touch with Nate's family and making sure they're getting all the support possible. Parents or guardians are encouraged to talk to their children tonight so they can share their questions and concerns about their classmate with you. It is our sincere goal to make sure you and students have resources and support, so school counselors as well as trauma counselors from Riverside Trauma Center are available for students. Please note that students who are participating in remote learning can access counselors by contacting the principal's office at 362-1850. Resources for talking with your children and traumatic incidents were attached to the email, and 24-hour crisis support is available through clinical and support options at 413-586-5555. Thank you for your care with this important matter. I think the only thing I'll share is as the situation evolves, we'll be back in touch with families. A similar email that did not name the student was sent to all families in all of our seven schools in the district, or the six of the other six of the seven schools in the district, but in conversations with staff and family this evening, they were comfortable with this becoming our public piece of information, and that's why we emailed all middle school families, and I'm sharing that tonight. So I think it's a tragic situation. We'll be able to share more as it develops. We don't want to get ahead of ourselves with that, but there's no further word I can use than tragic and words I can use than tragic and serious for this situation. And I think that's all I have to share on that one, but for people watching in the community as well as the committee, as the situation develops, we'll be communicating throughout about Nate, about his family, about all the students in the district, and how we'll continue to support folks for the remaining days we have in the school year and then heading into summer as well as the situation requires.
Thank you. So moving on, we will now vote to enter into executive session according to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21.3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the APA. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and I do declare, with the intention of returning to open session. So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved by McDonald, second, and by Spitzer. We'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Demling.
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Kenny.
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Lord.
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Stanser.
Stanser, aye.
Mr. Sullivan.
Sullivan, aye.
And McDonald, aye. So we will now move into executive session, and our anticipated return is 6:30 PM. Welcome back. We are now moving on to public comment. And we have one public comment, and I will share my screen right now. So as always, our public comment document will be posted on the agendas page of our Regional School Committee website. And we have no voicemail comments, and so we will move right along to our next item of business, which is a discussion on subcommittee meetings and structures and policy. So we started this discussion at our last meeting, where we were looking at our policy and talking about advisory committees as well as subcommittees, membership meetings, how many we have, whether we need them all, all of that. The policy subcommittee met last week, and it's like all blurring. I'm seeing Ms. Spitzer nodding her head, and reviewed our current policy as well as considered proposing a new policy for advisory committees. So both of those documents are in our packet. And I will suggest that we start with the current policy, which is actually second in our packets, which is on page 54, and it's Policy BDE. So some of the edits on here are being proposed by the policy subcommittee and are based off of the model or the reference policy from MASCE, which for folks not familiar with that, that's the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, and puts together a reference policy manual for districts around the state to use. So some of the edits are based on that. Some of the edits are also looking at other districts that have similar policies that are modeled off of the model policy, such as the standing subcommittees. So I'll just highlight some of the changes. The key change here is removing "and" task forces in that first sentence and addressing task forces in the new proposed policy of advisory committees. And then also just clarifying, which we, our practice is to do this, but we don't have it codified in our, in our policy, which is to appoint members at our annual organizational meeting for a period of one year. So those pieces were recommended in the model policy. In the bullets, removing again in the first bullet, the task force, because that will be addressed in the advisor committee. Adding in that it's the, not just the committee chair that appoints a subcommittee chair, but seeks the, but with the approval of the committee. And then removing the membership statement that is in our current policy. And what we did is we cut it from this policy and pasted that into the proposed advisory committee policy, so that subcommittee membership in this, in this proposed policy would be limited to school committee members. The other thing that we added was that the committee chair and superintendent or their delegate will be ex officio members of all subcommittees, and that is also in recognition that particularly on the policy subcommittee, we do have Ms. Westmoreland as our delegate from Dr. Morris on that committee. And I believe us on the budget subcommittee, Dr. Slaughter is an ex officio member of that as well. We then are proposing adding in, which is that the recommendation of the MASCE policy to acknowledge standing subcommittees in our core policy. So we consolidated, are proposing consolidating down to three, so that we have three subcommittees, and then also codifying that we ideally would strive for membership in each subcommittee to have at least two member towns present in that. So no subcommittees of just Amherst or Kellum, or only Kellum or only Amherst in there. So the core subcommittees we're proposing are budget and audit, so folding in audit into the budget subcommittee, I guess, and sometimes it has been, audit has been done with those budget subcommittees, sometimes not. The policy subcommittee and the superintendent evaluation subcommittee. So those are the key changes. And just for reference, the, because I'm not sure if it's on our website, but that's one of the things that we'll be signing ourselves up to is to be more deliberate in publicizing who are members of each of our subcommittees. They're just for folks watching at home. Mr. Sullivan, Ms. Spitzer, myself, and Ms. Westmoreland are the members of the policy subcommittee. Any questions, comments? Mr. Demling.
No, this is a scintillating administrative topic, but, but, but an important, an important one as we try to establish more consistent norms. So thank you to the policy subcommittee. I think, I think overall, this is, this is good. It's cleaner, it's more well organized. Just a couple of minor points. So appointing members at the annual organizational meeting maybe would add something like, if possible, or as needed. I just wouldn't, if we missed, you know, that one meeting, right? And then as the year went on, it became clear that we needed, say, a regional assessment method subcommittee or something like that. We wouldn't want to tie our hands that we, that we had missed the opportunity. So something about to submit, to shore everything up at the annual organizational meeting, but give us a little leeway. I like the addition of subjects, the approval of the committee with the committee chair appointing members. There's going to be a lot of administrative work to do, but it's certainly not meant to consolidate, you know, authority into that, that one position. So I like, I like giving the full committee that, that ability. You know, otherwise I don't have too much more to add. So there is a line there that says the subcommittees with their core characters. I think maybe that meant to be their core charges are.
Yep.
Otherwise, I like, I like this, I like this, I like this structure.
Ms. Lord.
Yes, thank you to the subcommittee, policy subcommittee for being in the weeds and making it more accessible and clear for the rest of us. I do have a question or two. So with the SETF, which has a heavy public involvement, the only voting members are school committee members that sit on that subcommittee, correct? Oh, and you want the second question? Okay. And then the second question is in regards to the CES subcommittee that Mr. Sullivan and I are on. Is it different when you are representing a district in a larger body? Because that one's a little more complicated. Thank you.
Yeah, what you're getting at is something that we talked about in the policy subcommittee meeting, which is that, that there's, there's, what we're trying to get is, get towards is being more clear, even with exactly that, those, those examples that you just gave us. So CES, that's not a subcommittee, that's an appointment of a representative to another body, right? Or a liaison. And so there's, there's roles or tasks that we, on occasion, as school committee members, we need to appoint somebody to represent us for that. So another example is our representative on CPAC or BPAC. CES would be another one, or delegate to the MASCE, voting delegate to the MASCE conference. So being clear that those are assignments as opposed to subcommittees. I think JLMSC would fall into that as well, right? So we appoint representatives to that. The, those, those meetings being sort of advisory to the regional committee still have to meet open meeting law, regardless of whether they're actually a subcommittee or that, it's one of the requirements. So to your question about SETF, because that has as a body is, is, we want it to be a public and a community organization, would become this advisory committee that still is subject to open meeting law. And there, you know, whether there's voting or not voting, the purpose of advisory committees, when we get to that policy, you'll see, is to provide a recommendation or recommendations and advice to, to the full committee as opposed to passing policy or budgets, right?
Thank you.
Other, other comments or questions or edits? Not seeing any. So let's move on, because Ms. Lord took us there. And let's move on to the next policy, which is the page before, which is BDF, Advisory Committees to the School Committee. And this one, so again, with the goal of sort of, even though it's adding more policy to our ever-expanding policy handbook, the goal was to sort of provide a little bit more clarity into how we think about these and the roles of the different committees and subcommittees that we have. So this is advisory committees would also be created by the school committee in much the same way that a subcommittee would. This would have, so this right now, as proposed, is almost identical to the model policy from, or the reference policy from MASCE with a change in terms of membership. And what we are proposing from the policy committee is that we take much of what we had from the subcommittee policy regarding non-school committee members, that that's in item three. So that language is about the only section where we provided edits. There was another one that we changed from the model policy. So that, sorry, that's item three. And then item seven was the other one that we changed. We changed the word fact to data. So again, the intent of this is to provide some more guidance for us in understanding how we form committees where we want more than school committee members, and we want to bring in members of our broader school community into advisory work for the school committee. Questions, comments, edits? Mr. Demling.
Yeah, so generally speaking, I think this is a really good compliment to the other policy. The thing I really like about it is, is numbers, number six, where it talks about each committee will be clearly instructed about, here's the length of time you're being asked to serve. Here's the resources the committee is providing to you. Here's the reporting dates and structure. Here's the term. Here's, here's how you can become a member of the committee. I'm thinking back a little bit to, I think we were about to, if I'm not mistaken, Chair McDonald launched a new school committee website that I think maybe got shelved with the return in person stuff, but hopefully we'll be able to get to that soon, where it's not just a list of, here's the dates of our meetings and agendas, but here are all of the structures, associated structures with school committee, right? And then we will be able to then clearly list and communicate to the public, not just the subcommittees we just talked about, but also these very important advisory committees, which really are opportunities for the public to engage with us in a more formal way to make recommendations. And I think it would be great if, if there was an easy way for members of the public to go there, to see there, to see that, and say, oh, here is an advisory committee on a topic that I really care about. And they, members are, this is how members apply to that, to that body, and this is when members are appointed. So, oh, I have a few months, let me reach out and talk to somebody who's been on that committee or contact the chair and ask about it. And just, so that it becomes, you know, much more publicly known resource. I think there's a, there's a common, and I think to a degree valid, constructive criticism of public bodies, that it's, you know, it's, you have to be in the know in order to really understand what's going on. And so we're always trying to make additional efforts for transparency. And I think this could be a really great way to formalize that and say, here's, here's a way we're actively encouraging members of the public to formally engage with the school committee in a way where we're providing resources, we're providing a structure, and then it's, it's not just, you know, you have public comment and that's it, right? So I really like this, I really like this as a compliment to the other policy.
Other comments, edits, questions? Dr. Morris?
Just very briefly to Mr. Demling. I think Mr. Chair McDonald and I have a training, I think the end of this month, about transition to the website, and you're exactly right. The return to in-person delayed a bit, but we should be all set by the time things get rolling for some, you know, August and summer meetings. I mean, August and fall meetings, excuse me.
Mr. Harrington.
Yeah, so I mean, I pretty much, like, asking a clarifying question here, something that's on the record and in public. So there's the part three here, where we, where it talks about residents of the four-member towns, parents or guardians of students, et cetera, et cetera. That also includes like choice-in, parents of choice-in students, right? And just the four, so that would be the only circumstances that someone who is not a member, not a resident of the four-member towns would serve on a task force or advisory committee. That's, is that correct, or?
Yeah, yeah, we had that conversation that we wanted to make sure that parents and guardians of choice students were able to be part of advisory committees. They obviously have a vested interest and they're part of our community. So yes, we did include that. Other comments or edits? So typically, when, for our, our policy with policy, just to get super wonk on everybody, is that we have a first read. And any edits, such as what we have on Policy BDF, are sent back, any revisions or questions for further exploration is sent back to the policy subcommittee, and then we come back with for a second read and potential vote, depending on the magnitude of changes and edits in between. Ms. Stanser?
Um, I have a question. So the term is to be one year for, in, in both these situations. What if you have an advisory committee that continues to work that is not just bounded by the academic year? What do you do about appointments in that case?
The proposed policy does, I can't remember. Number five, so members, it specifically says members may be reappointed. So as I understand that, and we can tweak that if that's not clear. The way sort of we understood that was that they may be reappointed, but it's requiring us to sort of assess at every year, on an annual basis, what the task is for that advisory committee and, and the membership. So much in the same way that we are asking ourselves to do that for our subcommittees, standing subcommittees.
Yeah, the Assessment Working Group, I think that lasted for about eight years. So that just kept rolling over. And I know that when I was on the field, that went for over two years, and they just, it just rolled over.
Any other thoughts? So seeing none, there's, we, and the policy subcommittee, I can't remember. I'm going to look to my, many other committee members, if we, what date we had, I believe it's next week.
I think it's September.
It's Monday, yeah. So other, anybody is welcome to join us if, if you have other thoughts on these policies after, after tonight, but the policy subcommittee will take another look at these on Monday, and at a future meeting, come back to that. So we will move on to our next item, which is our meeting calendar, which also is in our pocket. The one of the, I think the key point here, trying to get us back to meeting twice a month. Thank you, page 56. Trying to get us back to a more regular schedule of twice a month meetings, not every week. And what I would like to propose is that we meet in August and kick off our meetings for the school year with a retreat. And between now and, and we can spend our next meeting, if that's amenable to folks picking a date, then we can, at our next meeting, when we get to future agenda planning, we can talk about some of the goals and ideas for that retreat. There are lots of thoughts swirling in my mind, but I think the most important thing is for fixing on what would be an appropriate week or date for that. We can do a doodle poll, but if we know, for example, you're on vacation the week of the 16th, then we won't even bother doodle-polling that particular week. So I think first, are folks up for a retreat in August? And are there any weeks in, any of those two weeks that are off the table for anybody? Ms. Spitzer?
Yes, to a retreat, and I will, unfortunately, well, unfortunately for this purpose, I'll be on vacation the week of the 16th, so hopefully nobody's on vacation the next week. And I'd also just plug for maybe having it be a person, if that's an option. A retreat on Zoom just seems kind of sad to me.
That was my next question, is if folks would be up for in-person. The, I'm seeing lots of hints. So Ms. Kenny and then Mr. Demling.
I am unavailable the week of the ninth. Right, yep, the week of the ninth. And I think, yes, in-person would be great. I think also the rules are changing soon, next week, this week, about the ability for open meeting law to be virtual. So I'm not sure we're going to have a choice.
That starts tomorrow. You go, there's no more, no more of this virtual type meetings as of tomorrow.
Mr. Demling?
Yeah, it actually starts at 12:01, so Chair McDonald, let's keep on the agenda tonight, or else we might get in trouble. So plus three to what Ms. Spitzer said. Yes, to a retreat, yes, I think it should be in-person, and I am on a vacation the week of the 16th. Otherwise, yes, let's please do this.
Good job coordinating calendars there, Mr. Demling and Ms. Spitzer. Dr. Morris?
So two things, just in a more serious approach, yes, in four and three-quarter hours, that virtual meeting goes away, but it's likely the case that within a couple of days...
that, that virtual meetings goes away, but it's likely the case that within a couple of days that that will be extended and give committees the option. I'm not, I'm not trying to engage the committees. And the larger question of that right now, I think, so just to push the point, I don't know if anyone has an issue with the week of the 23rd out of the two weeks, you know, the chair said. Seems like a couple of people have a challenge the week of the 16th, but, you know, and we could doodle poll the date, but I just wonder if we can at least get to the, you know, both for, for, for you all, but also for the community to know that we, you know, we'd be looking to do a retreat that week of the 23rd. Certainly is okay with me. There are new teachers back that week, so I'd probably push for earlier in the week, but we can, we can sort that out later.
Great. If there's other concerns with the week of the 23rd, then we'll look at dates and come back from that. And I think any other, I, the only thing to call out on the region is the Amherst election schedule is on a different sequence or finding cadence than our other three towns. So Amherst elections are in November, and so we will potentially need to reorg, well, need to formally reorganize at the beginning of January when the new, so unlike other towns in Amherst, if the election happens in November, then any new members aren't seated until January. So that's why the reorganization happens in January. If there's any other comments, then we will go. Scan room. Nope. Next up is, uh, that's updates from member towns on plans regarding sixth grade moving to arms. Does anybody have any updates? Ms. Kenny?
Nothing new in Pelham.
Dr. Morris?
Can I maybe expand on the nothing new part? It was discussed at a recent meeting for the Pelham School Committee. I think there was, and certainly Ms. Stanser, Ms. Kenny, correct me if I'm wrong. There was openness to the general concept. There was no urgency to the conversation. So I think there was an opposition to somewhere down the road, having that conversation. I didn't get the sense it was opposition to any other towns doing whatever they chose to do from the Pelham Elementary School Committee. But I also, there was no fires lit, you know, at that meeting about Pelham's extreme interest or disinterest. I think it was very much a wait and see approach. And, and Margaret and Sarah, but you correct me for wrong, but that was, that was sort of what I remembered.
I guess I, I would, I, I don't know if I agree with there were no fires lit. I think that, I think the sense was that it was something the committee thought we should discuss. I don't, we didn't, certainly didn't talk about a timeline. But I didn't feel like it was indifference.
I saw a couple of hands go up and then go down. Ms. Kenny?
Sorry, I should have been more clear in my nothing new. Nothing since the last time the regional committee met and had this conversation. Like both what Dr. Morris and Ms. Dancer said are true and correct. I just was trying to move us along. Nothing new since the last time we talked about this, that region happened in Pelham.
Mr. Dumbling, did you have your hand up?
No, unless I'm forgetting something, I think Amherst gave its last update at the last meeting, which is there's high level of urgency in Amherst to explore this, but I think that's what we said last time, right?
Yes, I believe so. And Amherst, the Amherst Committee is meeting next week to continue that conversation. So at our next meeting, we'll have, we may have more to update at that point. Okay. If there's no more on that topic, then we can move on and bring in our colleagues, our other colleagues from Pelham. And while, while they're joining us, I will call to order the Amherst School Committee at 7:23 PM. And we'll take a roll call attendance. Mr. Dumbling?
Governor present.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington present.
Ms. Lord?
Lord present.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer present.
And McDonald present. Welcome. So over to you, Chair Hall. And while.
Okay, I'm seeing the president's quorum. I'll call to order this meeting. I'll call to order this meeting of the Pelham School Committee and start with roll call attendance. Ms. Kenny?
Kenny present.
Mr. Manina?
Manina present.
Ms. Dancer?
Dancer present.
And Hall present. And Ms. Barlow did let me know that at the last minute she couldn't make it tonight.
Um, our first item is to approve minutes and we have many. And I'm going to propose that, that we, we email all of our edits or comments, ads, whatever, to Ms. Charkis and, and maybe copies Sasha as well. And then we'll review them, the updated ones next meeting. I will call out that two of these minutes are already approved and posted on the website. So we do not need to review them again. That's January 5th and March 23rd. So all of the others, January 21st, February 2nd, February 16th, March 2nd, March 3rd, March 16th and May 18th. Okay. Um, moving on to public comment, we have no public comment this evening. For the joint meeting there, for Amherst Committee, there will be some ones there. And as always, public comment is always accepted until 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting, either by voicemail message at 4133452949 or by email to the chair, in this case myself, with a subject line public comment. So moving on to the chair's update, I do have one update that I would like to share. And I'm going to apologize because I'm going to be reading. As many at home and in our, in our committee are aware, we are in talks with representatives from the APEA, the union that represents teachers, clerical staff and paraeducators in the regional Amherst and Pelham School Districts to extend their contract and negotiate wage and salary increases. The APEA leadership has made several public statements about our negotiations and we've received a large volume of email related to those statements. So I'd like to respond and offer some broader context. Our teachers, paraeducators and staff are the heart of our schools and are critically valuable and delivering on our mission for the students and families of our districts, which is why we offer competitive pay that is above the average in our region. And this is why we included two types of pay increases in our budget for FY22, a cost of living adjustment or COLA increase of 1% for all staff and step increases for staff who are early in their years of service in our districts. About two thirds of paras in the district are eligible to receive a step increase this year, on average about 4%. With a 1% COLA on top of that, step eligible paraeducators will receive on average a 5% overall increase in pay next year. There are other approaches to pay increases, of course, and we've told the APEA that we are open to other approaches, including allocating more of our budgeted COLA dollars toward paraeducators. Our talks with the APEA this year have been around only the COLA increase, not the step increases for teachers and paras that are already included in our budget. In considering other approaches, we must recognize that our budget not only must reflect our values, it also must balance. And an increase in spending in one area requires an equal cut in spending elsewhere. A larger increase in pay for one group of teachers or staff requires either a smaller increase for another group of staff or additional cuts beyond what it already is planned in our FY22 budgets. These are the types of trade offs that we must make in order to consider a larger increase for one group of educators. We look forward to continuing discussions and reaching agreement with the APEA on an approach that both reflects our values and is in line with our fiscal reality. With that, I'm, I'm going to look around and see if there's any announcements from school committee members. Ms. Stanser?
I would just like to say that last week I went to the climate change carnival at the middle school and was very impressed with all of the activities that were going on. There was an article in the Gazette about the stream table, but there were lots and lots of other things as well. And it was great to see the kids. I think when I was there, the seventh graders were out taking part in everything. So I just wanted to say, I think that the teachers did a great job organizing and the AP, the Amherst Education Foundation provided a grant. So they were able to bring in some speakers from outside and so that was really terrific as well. So.
Thank you. Ms. Lord?
I wanted to say a huge thank you and gratitude to the high school team, the graduation team, all, everybody who came together, the volunteers to make graduations such an amazing moment. And, and I want to say congratulations to our graduates as well, but all the people that put hours and hours and hours and hours of work in, thank you. It was phenomenal.
As mentioned earlier in the regional only meeting, the policy subcommittee of the regional school committee is meeting on Monday evening. And I'm just going to look at the time. Monday evening, the 21st at 6:30 PM. And that will be on StreamYard or YouTube streaming for folks to watch from home. Assuming that we are still able to meet remotely, otherwise it will be in person. Any other announcements? So we will move on to our new and continuing business. And tonight we have our presentation and for the superintendent evaluation artifacts. That is also in our packet and that is, begins on page 58. Now turn it over to you, Dr. Morris.
Thank you. And, and as is my past practice, I'll be rather brief in describing a not so brief document. But really the goal of, of this is just to orient the committee to the doc, to the document and slight variations of, from previous years of how we've done this. When I met with Carrie, who's heading up the superintendent evaluation committee, tried to have a balance last year, obviously was, was a very different year and you had sort of very quick one pager with artifacts. And, and maybe what we did two years ago and trying to find that right balance. So, you know, one thing, one piece of feedback I received about the formatting or content was in past years, each element was sort of separately described and lots of information was repeated because the artifacts applied to more than one standard or element in the standards document. And so this year I combined, there was a couple of places where I combined elements that were, I was reporting on. And that reduced greatly. And there's one or two things that get repeated, but they're, they're few and far between. So hopefully that's easier for school members to digest and not feel like, oh, I read this four pages ago and where does this fit in? So hopefully that works, but of course if the committee doesn't for the committee, I'm happy to revert back next year. I think it's important to note for the committee that the goal, and this is quoting from the DESI Evidence Collection Toolkit, is to provide evaluators with a representative picture of my practice. It is not intended to be describe every single thing that's happened over the course of the year. So try to pick out representative pieces along the elements that were agreed to. That's described in the first page and the second page of the document. It's, it just goes over the, the goals for this year that were voted and agreed to by the committees. The third page describes the elements from that document that were, from the, the overall standards document that were included. And again, then the last nine or so pages, eight pages describe in a narrative format, some of the work that's happened. That's representative of the, in the elements that you, that are listed. It has hyperlinks to the actual artifacts. If anyone has any trouble with the hyperlinks, please let me know. I tested them all. They should work, but that doesn't always mean they do work. So, you know, if anything that's missing, please let me know. And then it tries to just, you know, very kind of deliberately go along the dimensions, starting with the elements one and then going on to element two and three and four. And, you know, find it finishing with the same as I have in the past years. A little different this year. We added a question, but a survey that's a more of a 360 degree survey. Survey of kind of the senior leadership in the district, both at the building base as well as at central office about feedback for me and my performance, which I utilize, you know, as we head towards next year for my own professional growth. But I don't want to belabor a document that's been written for the committee. I'm open to any questions or comments anyone might have, but I think that's as much presenting as I was planning to do this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Morris. That was brief. And, and thank you. I, I, it might be helpful for the community to post just the artifact document separate because it is such a mammoth agenda packet. And I'm always, um, every year when we receive this artifact document, I'm always, it's just such a robust and in-depth reflection on sort of what, what all has gone on in the district in the past year. A lot of which may have been covered in school committee updates and meetings. And so people who follow and watch every single one of our meetings might be aware of them. But it's a great, it's a great overview and update, I think, of all the, all the things that have been going on in, in our district led by you. So thank you.
Thank you. And we can do that tomorrow.
Ms. Stanser?
I just wanted to say that at the very end, the superintendent evaluation survey link, I've not been able to make that work. Didn't work earlier today and I just tried again. So if you have a chance to look at that.
Yep, I will send that. I think you have to download it and it's an Excel file. I couldn't make it work as a PDF, but I will email that to the committees just as a standalone attachment file, either tonight or tomorrow morning.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Dumbling?
So we have a timeline for filling out the evaluation now. We should probably talk about, A, because the, as I recall in the past, chairs have a little bit of work to do in order to prep for the next meeting on this.
Yes, our timeline is we would like all committees to get the, their survey responses in by a week from today. So that would be end of day on Tuesday, the 22nd. And I define end of day as like bedtime. Whatever your bedtime is, but it should be still June 22nd. That, that is my ask for the region committee and the Amherst Committee. Ms. Hall, I don't know. For the Pelham School Committee.
Same for Pelham. Thanks.
Mr. Dumbling?
It, it just is a reminder for anybody who's new, if you're, you're multiple committees, then you submit multiple evaluations. And so you're, you're doing, you have the formal look the same to you, but you're, you're looking at it from, you know, you just got to put your different hat on and submit it against the minutes.
Ms. Stanser?
I would also mention for people who haven't done this before, that on the, I think it's on the DESI website, there are some videos about doing the superintendent evaluation that people might find useful. So if you go to, just go to DESI and it wasn't not hard to find, I'm sorry, I should have the link in front of me, but I don't.
I'll try to send that out along with that artifact if I can dig it up quickly, just as a tool.
There also is a, it was a lunchtime webinar recently within, maybe not that recently, that MASC did on superintendent evaluation. So that, those, their webinars have been. 都有幫助， 所以那也可能是一個好資源。還有其他問題嗎？ 女士。Sullivan。
是的，我只是想給一個讚賞， 到 Adra Gracinski， 來自 Leverett， 和 Emily Marriott， 來自 Pelham， 因為他們花， 我連你都不知道， 花了五十分鐘， 把這個東西運起來。當我們，當我們重新在 2018 年翻盤的時候， 我只是想給他們一個感謝。
當你來， 現在感覺像一個很好的， 機器， 所以謝謝你提醒我們， 女士 Sullivan。我們會進入我們的下一个項目， 就是我們的第二個讀， 和可能投票， 關於 policy ECBFA， 也就是一個 revision， 是一個我們去年在 place coverings 上創立的政策。和那也是在， 我們的包， 在第 69。它是一個非常短的政策。當我們第一次讀它時， 沒有， 編輯或 revision 提供， 所以政策委員會沒有再檢討它。只是想看看， 看還有其他意見。女士。
我會興奮地舉動。我決定接受 draft revision， to policy EBCFA face coverings。接受 draft revision， to policy EBCFA face coverings。
一個第二個。還有其他的討論嗎？ 沒有，我們會舉動。女士。
女士。
女士 Harrington。
女士。
女士 Kenny。
Kenny。
女士。
Lord。
女士。
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 女士 Sullivan。
Sullivan。
然後 McDonald。這個政策通過了， 一致， 8：0。我會舉動同樣的動作， 亞美爾學校委員會， 批准 revised policy EBCFA face coverings。有沒有第二個， 對亞美爾？
第二個。
通過了 McDonald， 第二個 Harrington， 我們會舉動。女士。
女士。
女士 Harrington。
女士。
女士。
Lord。
女士。
女士。
和 McDonald。這個政策通過了， 對亞美爾， 5：0。Chair Hall。
我會舉動對 Pelham 的要求， 我決定接受 draft， 對不起， revised policy EBCFA face coverings。有沒有第二個？
第二個。
好的，通過了 Hall， 第二個 Kenny， 會有 further 讚論嗎？ 我們會舉動。女士。
女士。
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 女士 Kenny。
Kenny。
和 Hall。
謝謝。所以， 快點， 我們現在趕上了我們的日程， 所以那很好。我們有保證報告， 所以我会看， 女士， 對地區， 女士， Pelham， 如果你有保證， 要報告。
我等， 我們下周會有 Pelham 只有會議， 所以我就等一下。
女士，你有什麼？
對不起， 我相信我有， 對不起， 太早了， 因為我。
是的， 我有，
好的， 你先， 我會拿。
我有對亞美爾。所以， 我， 艾利森·麥當勞， 經過我的簽名， 支付額是 $123,304.52， 為保證， 6月4日。這包括一般投資費用， 是 $68,896， 涉及投資費用， 是 $13,556.49， 投資費用， 是 $24,742.91， 愛護行動基金， 是 $3,300， 行為和心理健康基金， 是 $6,848.24， 同時， 是 $199.50， 13 節， 投資金， 是 $5,692.38， 和一個獎項， 是 $69， 和我今天， 6月14日， 2021。女士。
好的， 所以我是 Spitzer， 經過我的簽名， 為保證， 6月3日， 2021。這包括一般投資費用， 是 $626,869.71， 和投資費用， 是 $4,785， 和這是我自己在 6月4日， 2021。謝謝。
好的， 所以， 接下來我們有接受獎項， 我不相信我們今晚有獎項。不。所以， Chair Hall。
好的， 我決定加入 Pelham 學校委員會。有沒有第二個？
第二個。
好的， 通過了 Hall， 第二個 Kenny， 我會舉動。女士。
女士。
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 Kenny。
和 Hall。Pelham 加入。晚安，大家。
晚安。
我會舉動同樣的動作， 加入地區學校委員會。有沒有第二個？
第二個。
通過了 McDonald， 第二個 Spitzer， 沒有討論， 舉動。女士。
女士。
女士 Harrington。
女士。
女士 Kenny。
Kenny。
女士。
Lord。
女士。
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 女士 Sullivan。
Sullivan。
和 McDonald。所以地區學校委員會加入了。謝謝。快點， 我們有， 接下來對亞美爾， 是公共意見， 我們有公共意見， 對於亞美爾會議。我們沒有聲音意見。和， 我們的學校委員會。所以我們有， 今晚的項目，
是的， 所以， 我， 將會分享這個更新， Kristen Hayes， 她和我們很久以前， 感覺， 這是， 這是 2019 年的秋天， 我們都知道， 好像很久以前， 但是她是， 我們支持的專家， 縣市和區， 來看看早期童年， 零到五， 在我們的社區， 她做了她的報告， 她無法今天來展示。我想很明確， 我不是童年專家， 但是我和 Hayes 聽到， 我想我能抓住這個報告的重點。和她願意在未來的某一天回來， 如果， 你知道， 對社區有利， 但是她的計劃， 今晚的三個會議， 下周， 29 日， 不能讓她來。所以我們想， 如果讓人們等， 我們會把它公佈， 我會盡力去努力， 來報告。和，再次， 我只是， 我會， 對於在家的人， 我會使用她的頁號， 不是那個包， 但是他們在包， 為參考。所以， 第一页， 她的報告， 稍微顯示了一些差異， 或者分別， 之間， 報告上次， 和報告這次。所以一些重大的變化， 是 updated， demographic 和出生數據被包括， 和其他 sources， demographic， different demographic information 被包括。還有是一個 closer look at facilities， 但 perhaps 最重要的是， 一個總統 Biden 略微提議的 universal preschool plan， 被包括， 和， 我們不知道會發生， 那會是， 可能會對很多社區有很大影響， 計劃了 many communities， 關於早期童年教育。第二頁有她的三個關鍵發現， 我會其實認為是四個關鍵發現， 我告訴她， 我會認為， 所以這不奇怪。第一個是， 有授權 childcare， 對約美爾的年輕孩子， 0到5 歲。那是少於一半， 那不好。和， 就像其他亞美爾， 或者任何社區， 有金融資格， 能夠支付全集的選擇， 亞美爾的， 沒有， 有， 沒有有金融資格， 有較少的選擇， 如果有的話。而那正是問題。所以第二個主要發現， 是那第一個最後一句， 我會讀出來， 服務服務， 對三到四年級的孩子， 是這個報告的重點。然而， childcare， 孩子出生到三歲， 是這個社區的唯一需求。這很難， 因為這不是， 你知道， 我們沒有， 你知道， 我們的責任是三歲小孩， 有 disabilities， 在我們的狀況下， 有或沒有， 因為我們有整體計劃。她， 強調， 和， 繼續強調， 和我想強調， 三歲的出生部分， 真的就是負擔。我們的社區， 我認為， 正經有社會， 你知道， 平等和 diversity， 在所有事情上， 我們現在生活在一個社區， 在過去一年， 兒童和年輕孩子， 尤其是那個群， 有收入資格， 沒有夠， 沒有夠照顧。如果你看任何研究， 你知道， 我在區， 和一直都在區， 都是三到二十歲， 三到 21 歲， 零到三， 或者零到二， 是極度， 極度關鍵時間， 腦海發展， 和我覺得負擔， 我們繼續， 在這個社區， 這個問題。我把它留下， 但是我想這真的值得記住。我認為， 第三個關鍵發現， 是， 有很多需要照顧的照顧， 對孩子在外面， 因為很多家庭， 很多家庭， 通常有， 所有家庭， 所有家庭成員， 成年人，在家， 無論有多少， 工作的父母。我們的社區沒有那麼多， 有選擇， 或者能夠在家， 全天候照顧孩子。所以這個社區需要。和她的最後發現， 是他們的 preschool 繼續照顧高需求學生， 很好， 但是， 和， 有整體計劃， 但是， 在 universal preschool 上， 對， 那不是我們做的事， 我們沒有， 我們沒有空間， 或人員， 我們不是設計， 對任何三到五年級的孩子， 在社區， 接受 preschool 教育， 從我們的區， 或者我們的社區。所以其實這個， 這種滿滿的需求， 在我們的社區。有巨大的 demographics， There's a tremendous amount of demographics. I'm not going to go over all of those. I think, you know, she highlights. You know, some mild changes demographically, in my opinion, mild, not huge swings in terms of numbers. We have some declining birth rate. We knew that, but again, this is two thousand seventeen data. So every year you, you find out a little bit more, but we're already backtracking quite a ways. And looking at licensed childcare providers in the Amherst, looks a bit at children in the household under six. And how that works in the labor force, how she comes with findings, but a lot of the tables and researchers really incredibly interesting someone like me. But it really supports her findings more than, you know, requires more description tonight. So I would encourage us to skip to page ten. And I think that's where things get interesting and quite a bit more different than the last time she presented. You know, in not the far distant past, the Biden administration has proposed what's called the American Families Plan. Which proposes universal high quality preschool to all three and four year olds. Sticker shock for some people in Congress, not for others, but about two hundred billion dollars would be have to be allocated. And so that is when we said about what's different, that would be different if that passes. It potentially, you know, there'd be a tremendous amount of new information that would come out from it. But it might create a funding stream to make many, many more things possible than exists with our current resources that we have here. I think on page eleven, she highlights that. You know, some undetermined pieces about where preschool classroom would be located. But the idea is that, you know, it could be within a mixed delivery system. So, you know, within a public school, even if we didn't run the program, we might, you know, prohibit a pride space and some overhead for preschool programs as part of this. Plan that may or may not be passed. And so that was really interesting to us. Well, you know, we, she described a couple of other districts that she's seen that have that model, that it's a mixed model where. The school retains its school characteristics, but includes basically offering space for other programs. Very analogous to how we run our aftercare programs. So we have at the elementary level, we have aftercare programs in each of our elementary schools. We, we ourselves do not run those programs, but we provide space and collaboration for them. That's an interesting model. That's really different than what we've thought about in the past. I don't have to tell you all, because you were at a meeting last week about it, space is not in abundance in our current schools, current school settings. But this bill hasn't also passed. So I think we do have time to think about it. And see how this develops in terms of what Congress does and how this plays out within Massachusetts, which I'm guessing is not going to be a quick process. You know, there's a number of other parts of the law I won't get into, but I think it does offer hope. More hope than we had before, even if this was done in the winter, or a funding stream that might help. Us think about what's possible, but you know, nothing in terms, just to be really clear, nothing in terms of anything that would happen for the next academic year in the fall. I think on page twelve, there's really some really important highlights, and I'm sorry to go through this, this in a linear way. I guess the opposite of what I did with artifacts. But I think I'm just trying to pick out the highlights that I think are most valuable. What's required for universal preschool that's different than ours is that it's, you know, has to be, has to serve all age eligible children. Right? So it's, this is not an integrated special education model. This is all children model. I think another worthy thing of mentioning is that it would have to be much longer days than our current preschool program is designed for. So kind of what's considered high quality at the federal level is a thousand, roughly a thousand hours a year. Which is six hour service day and a hundred eighty days. It, those numbers should seem familiar because they're roughly the same numbers that would occur for a public school in a traditional way. You know, hundred eighty school days, six hours a day. That's not our current preschool model. So again, we'll have to wait to see how things play out over time. But you know, this isn't just taking our pre, current preschool model and expanding this. This would be potentially a pretty significant shift or addition to what we're currently able to offer. And then, you know, she goes into some details, benefits and drawbacks of locating our current model where all of our preschool classrooms are at Crocker Farm. Versus having at least some level of preschool classes in each early childhood center. There's not a right or wrong, and she's very clear about that, but I think the tables are really helpful. If we get to the place where we're able to consider some options here. And the last thing I want to highlight is starts on page seventeen, which is the recommendations. So I think the, the sentence that stands out to me is. Couple of lines down, having witnessed the rollout of universal preschool in other states and cities. The single's biggest lesson learned is there's been collaboration early and often. Is was, is what results in a system of care that meets the needs of families and their young children. So instead of having the mentality of, which I think I went into this with. You know, we should sort of own this. It's about perhaps collaborating with partner agencies and seeing what's possible over time. And you know, that's a, that's a mind shift for us. I think as schools, you know, frankly, over years, not just our schools. We've, we, we, we sort of have taken on lots of, right, for good reasons, lots of kind of. Social issues and social responsibilities and kind of the feedback here is our social responsibility is to work with early childhood providers. If this is, comes to pass and see what we can offer, and particularly as it comes to space expertise, professional development. So she recommends in fall that we reach out to private providers to determine their current enrollment. To try to get a better sense of where we are currently situated. We have seen this drop of enrollment both in our schools as well as live births. We want to track that over time. And that's a step we can certainly do in the fall. She also recommends understanding better from our community partner, partners, what they believe the early learning needs of the, are of the community. I will be candid that the pandemic has. Shifted things. We're getting a tremendous number of referrals from private daycare providers and preschools. For special education needs. It's been hard for us to parse out what's been the experience of being a young child during a pandemic as a percentage of their life. We're talking about kids who have spent a third of their lives in a pandemic. You know, the rest of us on this call, it's a much lower percentage. And so with our early childhood providers, we've been collaborating a lot because of that. And how do we assess where kids are and what their needs are? Second recommendation is. To look at our internal, at our program and what standards we want to meet as high quality, especially if the kind of the federal system moves forward. With President Biden's proposal. The third proposal, you know, she's very clear, remains a challenge to recommend what districts should do as far as the location of preschool slots. Again, we talked about this for probably over an hour last night about space in the elementary schools. I don't want to rehash that. But the short story is we don't have a lot of space at the elementary level. That could change over time. Enrollments could go down. We have a building project that's happening. But it may be the case that partnering with Head Start, we may have a vacated building in a couple of years. That we may want to think about it. So I think it's just, it's not about developing a specific plan because I think there's too many variables right now. But keeping open mind all along that there may be, we may be able to provide. Space and maybe that's the best thing we can do to promote preschool access in the town of Amherst. So I think that's a helpful frame for me. And the fourth one is, is again, you know, the additional slots, you know, what does that depend on? We have to look at live births, you know, providers in the area. Head start requirements as well as the proposed childcare bill. So, you know, in summary, for me, this is incredibly helpful report to understand the needs of our community more. As it relates to three to five year olds, it sets a roadmap if a proposal goes forward in this federal government. To start partnering with our community agencies, private preschools, to see what's possible, particularly head start along that dimension. And to continue access Kristen Hayes, you know, if that goes on, she can be a helpful conduit to have help with those conversations. And keep her connected to our community because I think she's been an invaluable resource for preschool coordinator, for myself and for us as we want to start forward. So sorry for that long winded summary. But I thought I would try to just highlight some of the key variables and provide some context based on my conversations with Kristen. But I'm open to any feedback, comments or questions that the committee would have.
Questions? Ms. Spitzer?
So thank you so much for this presentation and. As a parent of a two and four year old, I spent a lot of time thinking about accessing. Childcare for, for both very young, the zero to three group and the four year old group now. And I know from just talking to other parents, the, the supply does not meet the current demand. But at the same time, I'm, I wanted to highlight one thing when you're talking about partners. And I think it's important to point out, there are providers who aren't on this list. And I'm thinking particularly about UMass and also Hampshire College. They both have centers and they're made, I mean, I think about UMass as a major employer. So one of the things I think that's unique when we're thinking about care for, for really young kids is that for some, for some families. You know, it's, it's about socialization, but for others, it's really about just enabling them to get to work in a way that I don't think elementary. Education necessarily is like, you need to know your child is safe and cared for while you're at work. And for this really young age group, it's, it's, it's essential. So. I'm thinking about UMass as being one of our primary employers in, in the, in the town. And also, you know, would be a very convenient spot and they do have a large program. So I just want to make sure that since they're not on table five, that we don't lose them from the conversation. And same thing with Hampshire College, because I know they've continued to offer, offer. In person childcare as well. So. Anyways, this is a long winded way of saying, but I, I would be curious. I don't know if there's any way to track this. But for Amherst and families, there are probably also people coming into Amherst who might be looking for childcare near where they work. Who aren't necessarily living in Amherst. Like it feels like this is one of those things where you could have families. Who utilize all of the places listed on five, who are not necessarily in the same way like zone to our district. So it, it just complicates the picture. I'm not saying I have a solution. In the same way, some families may be opting to send their kids to childcare that's closer to their place of employment, whether it's Springfield or, you know, wherever, wherever they work. So thanks for this. And, and I also just want to say, is there, I think it's important we also engage with those who are family based providers. Because I know there's a lot of that in this. I mean, you know, I, I've used family based providers myself. And I think I'm excited about this rollout of. Not rollout, but the potential for universal pre, but I do think it would be interesting to see like, what is it going to mean for. For those family providers who aren't center based. So, thank you.
Mr. Denly?
Yeah. So thank you for this overview of the report. I also appreciated the update. You know, so I, I tend to think of expanded pre K, getting late, expanded pre K. Through, through the lens of, of what the core mission of our public schools is. And that's the way I, I think about it is, is for students with disabilities. Starting at age three before they get, get to kindergarten and that's, so that's the population we serve and we do that. For free. And if we're going to expand that, then we need a reliable funding source in order to expand that, that core mission. And I, I feel like we, when we socialize this idea with the community and when we engage. Our local governments and other social service agencies, we have to start from that. Point of view, because it's, it's, it's the first thing that, that answers the question, well, why don't you just do it, right? Like, and, and it's, it's, it's more than just space, you know, we, we have such intense spaceship, space issues, obviously in our district. That everything that space seems to dominate every conversation. And obviously there are variables in expanding, potentially expanding preschool. That relate to space, but you know, from my understanding, if, if we had a gleaming new building tomorrow. We wouldn't necessarily be able to expand preschool because you still have to staff it. You still need resources and you still need a plan to fund that into the future and, and that, that costs money. And so unless the Amherst School Committee budget is greatly expanding, we can't greatly expand preschool. I mean, that's, that's the zero sum of budgeting. And so, so I appreciate that this report frames any significant expansion. With, with, you know, ties it to this, this federal funding proposal, which, you know, I mean, unfortunately, right now is still just a proposal. I mean, fingers crossed, hopefully it goes through, but right now it's just a really great idea. And we are, we are quite a long way from those dollars actually getting approved, getting into law, getting to the state, getting to our district, getting to our hands, to where we can actually execute on them. So it's, you know, and, and I hate, hate to sound like I'm throwing cold water on the idea of should we expand preschool? Because for all the things we've mentioned, for the, for the daycare, for the social, for early academic intervention, for, for all those wonderful things. You know, there, there's strong universal support for this idea, which in our community, which, which I think is good. But I do think that part of our role on the committee is to, is to temper expectations somewhat with the reality of, of the situation. And the other thing I wanted to ask about Dr. Morris is this, you know, servicing the zero to three. So public schools don't do that. And yet, you know, you talked about how you feel distressed that we have. This, this lack of access in our community, particularly for those who are economically disadvantaged and that those options are, are limited. And I wonder, why don't you just expand on that a little bit? I mean, I, I would imagine that inequitable access to early. Preschool is, is an issue in, in many communities, but is, is there something particular about. What we provide as a town or as, as a service that we're not doing? Because, because when I think about potentially expanding that, I think about simple ideas like, well, what about subsidies? What about another line item in the town of Amherst budget, right? If, if, if people are passionate about this idea. And they understand that zero to three isn't part of the core mission of public schools, should they be going to the town council and advocating for that? So you just talk a little bit about that.
I like your ideas. And seriously, I do. So, you know, the short story is the earlier, earlier in a person's life, you can provide high quality structured care. That's much more effective, you know, and you're talking about people, but you know, from a, from a return on investment perspective, if you want to think about it in that way. The interventions you provide earlier are much more successful and prevent much larger problems down the road. Right? And that's just longstanding, you know, research. If you look at like Ron Ferguson's research, I mean, he's really shifted so much of his career talking about schools. And at this point, he's mostly, he works at Harvard and does the achievement gap institute and a whole bunch of other neat stuff. And, you know, he, he's so focused on zero to two right now. Because, you know, he's an economist, did a bunch of research and said, wow, we should really be investing a lot in zero to two and, and early parenting and all sorts of things. So we, you know, the town right now doesn't have sort of the structures around that. And it's twofold. One is that's so important for young children, for families who make the choice that they want care. That they're provided high quality care. It's also really important for families to be able to work. Right? So it, it hits on both ends because the families can't work because they can't afford childcare. Then that, that leads to multiple negative implications for the family, both financially, but also for child development. If that's not by choice, that's kind of by default. Or people are working night shifts so that they can, because they have coverage at night, but then they're trying to sleep today and take care of their young one. I mean, you know, everyone on this call has had a young one at one point in time. That's not a good model, right? And so I think it actually spills out into many other challenges within our community that, that many families have, particularly as you noted. Families faking, facing economic stressors. So yeah, that it's, it's very difficult and I'll be blunt that we see the impact on that, right? When, when we receive students and one of the first things, as you've all experienced, as we do. A meeting between the counselor, the principal and the parent, and we get, you know, developmental history. You know, it's families struggle mightily when they have young children. That's true probably for many, many families, if not all families. But those struggles aren't equitably distributed. Right? Families who are able to work and, you know, pay for high quality care. Kids ability to get socialized and have, be in a supportive environment. It's incredibly valuable down the line. And I don't mean just like ABCs. It's really just a structure and being with other people, right? It's not like I'm looking for, or I believe that this needs to be an overly academic focused early childhood care. It's actually, you know, the best ones are about creativity, discovery, exploration and being in a group, right? Those are core foundational skills that kids can learn in high quality early childhood settings. And, but there's a cost to that. So I, I could go on forever about this. I won't. And, and, you know, as a, the first thing I sensed today, mentioned tonight, I'm, you know, not quite my best self this evening. But it, every time someone comes back and says that or talks about either universal preschool or zero to three in particular. It seems like it, it, it doesn't. Mobilize. Action in the way here and the way the other, and I don't mean to Chris, I love Amherst, but it just, I haven't seen movement on that. And we know the long term implications, short and long term implications of that. There's, you know, we talk about late start. There's ample evidence, just the same way there is on late start on the implications for families and the equity. You know, you know, I think one thing that I remember Dr. Ferguson saying is if you think about. Where students are, if they don't have the, you know, some structured experiences at early, or young age. And families for a whole host of reasons aren't able to provide that, you know, it's really hard to make that up later. Right? It's just brain development. And so I'll leave it there, but, but I do think, you know, in the medium to. Medium term, you know, whatever the actions are for communities like Amherst that have our demographics that understand or are committed to equity. I'd like to figure out ways that we recognize this as a real issue. I know our former, this isn't a critique of the current one, as she's doing a lot of work on other fronts. Our former health director Julie Fetterman, who was on board for the, for the first part of this project. Thought really strongly because she saw it from a, not academic, but actually from a health perspective, being the health director for the town. She saw the implications of the lack of high quality care that many of our families are able to access. And the long term implications from a health perspective as well. It's not just about reading and math and, and things like that. So I'll stop.
Hey, I think it's a really. I don't know what the right act to this, but a really needy discussion, I think, and that we, I feel like we need to continue to come back to. Because I. You know, just speaking for myself, the, the, the need is, is, is obviously great. And it's something that I personally care deeply about. And I would share sort of the question that Mr. Demling started to raise, which is. To what extent, what is the role of the district in solving that? And is it, you know, like, it's not should we, but how, I think is really, really the question. I think we, I'm just looking at folks faces. I don't want to speak for others, but I, you know, I think, you know, people care deeply about this. We recognize the, the need for it. How do we do that? And I, I go back to, I think you called it out, Dr. Morris, the, one of her key components is, comments was about collaboration early and often. And I, and I wonder if sort of exploring that is really how we go about it, really? Because maybe it isn't that the school provides the solution, but that we provide the collaboration and the onramps. For those students into our kindergarten as well as for the, the programs that we currently, that currently meet our mission. And I know that we're not also, or it's not meet our mission, but part, right, in our current mission, right? And I know that there's, there's challenges in space for just meeting our current programming goals. That, that's, that's one piece of the, the challenge as well. So, because I, you know, it's, it's a funding question as we have declining enrollment at the, the older grades and sort of. The painful cuts that we had to make this year and, and will continue to face and have to have those conversations as, as we're then expanding. Our, our population to earlier and earlier ages, it, you know, the pot becomes even smaller for some of the other things that we want to do for older students. So it's not a question of, if we do it, I think it really is how and how much of that, what is the role that the district and the school, schools will play in that? And maybe it's facilitator and leader of the conversation as opposed to provider. I, I don't have any further thought, other questions. Mr. Denly?
Yeah, I, I really like that idea. I think, I think a possible way forward, I mean, not this month, but possible way forward would be maybe a joint meeting with the town council. I mean, to be blunt, we don't, we don't control the purse strings. You know, we, we, we get, you know, the school committee, we decide what to do with, with the purse that we're given, but we don't, we don't control the size of that. And so if we're talking about, you know, a community social service that, you know, a town is investing in. It's, it's, it's true that I think the superintendent would, would be asked to lead that facilitated, lead that facilitating conversation. You maybe, maybe you bring in some representatives from reach, maybe you bring in some representatives from EI, from, from state services. And I think, I think the, the first step would just be education. And I mean, education of public representatives and the public, right? About just what, because I, I think there is still a, a, not a great base level understanding of the basics that we just covered twenty minutes ago. About what's the distinction between zero to three and four to five and special ed and non-special ed? And, and where are the different points that where, where families can access and, and how, what obstacles? Do families, I think that others do not, and, and what, what happens in our community? I think just starting from that, I think would be really helpful, you know? And then, and then we'll see where it goes, because ultimately if we're talking about increasing funding, that's really something the public decides, right? It, it, the public understands that and then the public either elects or advocates and, you know, at the state or local level. And, and, you know, and we go from there, but I, I think maybe that might be a, an opportunity.
Any thoughts? Any folks who haven't spoken? Ms. Spitzer? Is that a, is that a hand? Sorry.
I didn't want to go before. If anybody else wanted to speak for the first time, I guess I, I kind of, I agree with everything in terms of facilitating. I, I think I would even push it a little bit further and for a lot of the reasons that Dr. Morris said. I think we could be strong advocates for the expansion. So not just saying we need to talk about it, but that we think it would actually benefit the families in our district. Because most of these kids who we're talking about providing care for eventually, you know, ideally, I, I, I want these kids attending our public schools. Especially if it's, you know, the right fit for them. Anyways, so I, I guess I would just say, let's. Let's just take a slightly strong, I would, I would advocate for a stronger stance and say advocating for this expansion and, and doing as much as. let's just take a slightly stronger, I would, I would advocate for a stronger stance and say advocating for this expansion and, and doing as much as we can to, to help make it happen.
Ms. Lord?
Yes, sometimes when I don't speak, it's just about efficiency, not that I don't have less to say. But I definitely echo support of this. I learned when I was at Smith School for Social Work, I took preschool policy and just for education, but also for humanity, the long-term benefits and necessities of this earlier section that we're talking about are critical and hugely important. And I didn't know that before that class. So I also echo what Mr. Demling said about maybe all of us getting a little more education about, you know, this country is going to save trillions if we have universal access. But anyway, so, but thank you for opening space and encouraging me to talk.
Mr. Harrington?
Yeah, I kind of, I definitely support the, the concept of advocacy. And I see like the, I mean, I see the difference it's made in my own child's life, having good quality childcare at that, that early age, that zero-to-three point. It, I'm definitely open to the, the concept of, of, you know, facilitating like collaborations with different groups and organizations. I do kind of have a cautious view of certain organizations that provide these services. So I would think like, I, I, I think the the misspeak by, by Chair McDonald, I, I concur with the concept of collaborating with groups that, that actually do meet our values, our mission as a, as a district. Like, I would, I would, I would have serious problems supporting us channeling young children into a group that wasn't, you know, equity-focused, multicultural, didn't have the multiculturalism value, those sorts of things. But yeah, there's, there's a clear-cut need, and I think we need to do it the right way. Plus, I'm also in, in favor of better preparing our students to come into our, our district and be more productive in there.
So I don't know if we, we landed on next steps for this. And I heard one suggestion that we look to have some joint meeting with the town council to go through the, the need and the basic education. Is that, I think, maybe we circle back and seeing lots of yawns and eye rubbing going on. So so why don't we we can explore that. I don't, given the, the nature of the the, it's not a decision that we're going to be making overnight or anytime soon, I think, was the, the key thing. So I think there isn't a sense of urgency that we need to jump on this next week. So we'll, we'll come back to that in our, maybe in our future agenda planning. And speaking of I think that's our last item of business. Right now. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I move to adjourn the Amherst School Committee.
Lord, second?
Moved by Spitzer, second by Lord, and there is no discussion. So we'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, I.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, I.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, I.
Mr. Demling?
Demling, nay.
McDonald, I. Despite Mr. Demling's wishes to keep meeting, we are now adjourned.